Welcome. It is now 7:00 PM. I would like to call the Monday, January 11, 2021 Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good quality, good audio quality for council members and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat, and directions to do so will be in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and your address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat at the "public" portion, and you will be called on during the relevant time. Insert your name and the address that you live at, and if you would like to speak for or against. If you are speaking during the, if you would like to speak during the public portion, just again, put your name and your address, and the council president will call on you during that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Due to the executive order of Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council Meeting will be legally held by way of a virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams application. At this time, our invocation will be given by Chair Matthew Weesaw, the Pocahontas Band Apollo Army. Again, we welcome Chair Matthew Weesaw.
Thank you all, and good evening. Shall we pray? Dear Father God, Creator of all things, we just want to take a moment and pause to reflect on Your greatness, to humble ourselves before You, to ask that You continue to watch over us, guide and direct us, grant our leadership wisdom to do the best of their ability to work for the people that have put them in this office, to improve the quality of life for all. Ask that You would watch over this entire country and the leadership of this country and the community. Help us to heal, to move forward, to follow up on the greatness that we know we can achieve through You. For these things, we ask in Your Son's name. Amen.
Thank you so much for that beautiful invocation. Clerk Jones, will you please now call the hall?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Andrew's here.
Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Councilmember Wax? Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President McBride?
Present.
President White?
Present.
We have seven present for right now. I will check the...
I'm present. I was saying it. I don't know what was going on.
Oh, okay. We didn't hear you. Okay. Councilmember Lee, is Councilmember Wax present? Okay, I will watch when he joins. Yes. Okay. All right. We have nine present.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. We'll now have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes for the Monday, December 14, 2020.
Yes.
Clerk Jones, will you please read the Subcommittee on Minutes for the December 14, 2020 meeting?
Yes. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the December 14, 2021 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion to accept the report on the Subcommittee on Minutes for the December 14, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you so much, Clerk Jones. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax? Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. For those who are present for Bill 71-20, please note that this bill has been tabled until February 8, 2021, as requested by the petitioner. I will now entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Hall, as there is no special business or reports from city offices at this time.
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White? Nine ayes.
Thank you.
Okay. The Committee of the Hall is now in session. Prior to the reading of the first bill tonight, the chairperson of the Committee of the Hall, which is me, will briefly explain the procedures, which to be followed for all public hearings on bills filed for ordinance consideration at the first regular meeting of each, before the first council meeting of each year. This shall be done immediately prior to the first bill being scheduled for public hearing as per Section 2-11. So I'm going to briefly go over the procedures for the year on how the Committee of the Hall. So the clerk, the city clerk shall read each bill by title only. The chairperson of the council standing committee, to which the bill was sent, shall give a report on the recommendation from that committee. A formal presentation of the bill shall be made, which is not subject to a time limitation. Common council members shall have the right to ask two preliminary questions to the presenters immediately following the close of the formal presentation on the bill. Members of the public supporting the bill shall have the opportunity to address the council. Each member of the public shall be required to state his or her name and residential address, or in the case of a proposal made on behalf of an entity other than a natural person, or on behalf of a group of individuals, that person and/or their agent shall state his name or her name and the business address for the record, prior to making remarks in support of the bill. Each member of the public speaking in favor of the bill shall be limited to five minutes. If the formal presentation against the bill under consideration, the person or agent speaking on behalf of such a remonstrance group shall not be subject to time limitation. Therefore, each member of the public speaking in opposition shall be limited to five minutes for his or her presentation. Each member of the public shall be required to state his or her name and residential address, or the case of a proposal made on behalf of an entity other than a natural person, or on behalf of a group of individuals, that person and/or their agent shall state his or her name and business address for the record, prior to making remarks in opposition of the bill. Each member of the public speaking in opposition of a bill shall be limited to five minutes. The remonstrance period following any formal presentation against the bill under consideration shall not exceed the time used by members of the public who spoke in favor of the bill, or shall be limited to 30 minutes, whichever is greater. There shall be an automatic five-minute rebuttal period for the person or persons who made the formal presentation on the bill under consideration, after which the public portion of the hearing is closed. Following the public portion of the meeting, the council portion then takes place where the members of the council may make a statement and make motions on the bill under consideration. Each bill must have a motion addressing the disposition of the bill, as it is then sent to the full council for final action. In compliance with the governor's executive orders, the South Bend Common Council will be legally held by way of virtual meetings using Microsoft Teams. The Committee of the Hall notes how residents can participate for the public portion as follows. The public can participate in the meeting by following directions in the chat section of the Microsoft Teams app at the link provided by the city clerk. Any member of the public wishing to speak in favor or opposition to this bill must indicate their desire prior to the close of the public hearing. In order to speak in favor or against a bill, you will need to state your full name and address, as is also required to speak in at in-person meetings. The city clerk will inform the chair of the Committee of the Hall in which order to proceed to address each person in order with a time limit of five minutes each. And that was a requirement that I read that prior to any of the first meetings. So this portion of the council meeting where the bills are given a second reading and public hearing, I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been first given, have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow a report, a committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. And we are going to start with substitute bill 5820. So Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill, substitute bill 5820, a second reading?
Yes. 5820, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to Make Miscellaneous Technical Changes for Clarification and Consistency and to Correct Typographical Errors in Various Articles.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept substitute bill 5820?
So moved.
I second.
The bill has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please take the roll call for substitute bill 5820?
Yes. Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan? Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, there is. Bill 58-20 came before the Zoning and Annexation Committee this afternoon and was sent forward to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Thank you, Council. Joe Molnar, Zoning Specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. Just like a committee for the three zoning text amendments before you, I'll give the report from the Plan Commission, and then Michael DeVita, the principal planner for the city, will give the majority of the presentation. The proposed ordinance before you simply helps clarify the regulations and development standards required under the zoning ordinance. The staff sent this to the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, and the Plan Commission sent it to you today as well with a favorable recommendation, and I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Joe. Michael DeVita, Principal Planner with the City of South Bend, Investment Offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. So our new zoning ordinance is just over one year old, and we don't want to pass up the opportunity to make it even easier to use, even though we've been very satisfied with how it's gone so far. So we present here tonight the second set of quick fixes. As we had in the first set of quick fixes, that was passed last June, they're really housekeeping items, no significant policy changes, so within the ordinance, correcting typographical and internal consistency errors, just providing further clarification on how rules are applied, all under the idea of just trying to enhance the user-familiarness. So in your packet was the specifics on it, went over a few of those at a committee meeting in November and again this afternoon, but I'd be happy to take any questions you might have on those.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? At this time, we're going to go to the public portion hearing. If there are anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill 5820?
Okay. This is Dawn from the clerk's office. I don't see anyone from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of bill 5820.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak against substitute bill 5820?
I don't see anyone from the public expressing interest to speak against bill 5820.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point then, the public hearing on bill 5820 is now closed. Is there any council members that wish to make any statements regarding the bill before Seeing none, I'll now entertain a motion regarding substitute bill or bill 5820?
I make a motion that we move bill 5820 to the full council favorably.
Okay. There's been a motion, and the bill has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Wax? Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. We're going to move on to substitute bill 5920. Clerk Jones, will you please give bill 5920 a second reading?
5920, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to Reformat and Clarify the NNZO Northeast Neighborhood Zoning Overlay.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the substitute bill 5920?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
There has been, there's been a motion and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 5920 came before the Zoning and Annexation Committee this afternoon and is sent forward to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Is the petitioner present? If you are, please state your name and address and share with us the key points regarding the bill before us.
Thank you, Council. Joe Molnar, Zoning Specialist, offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. The ordinance before you helps provide consistency between the NNZO Northeast Neighborhood Zoning Overlay and the overall zoning ordinance. This consistency helps everyone who uses the ordinance and staff better enforce zoning provisions while it also reduces redundancies between the two. The staff gave us a favorable recommendation to the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission sent it to you as well with a favorable recommendation.
Michael DeVita, again, Principal Planner, offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. So this is a reformatting of the Northeast Neighborhood Zoning Overlay, kind of some of the same goals here as the quick fixes you just saw, really to improve the ease of use. So when the new zoning ordinance went to effect in January of 2020, kind of carried forward the old regulations. So now we're reorganizing those, so it follows the same structure as the rest of the zoning ordinance, the base ordinance. Again, making no major policy changes here, just trying to make it easy to use, follow in the same order that the base ordinance is. So if you're familiar with the terminology in the base ordinance and the order in the base ordinance, then you have no trouble finding any applicable standards in the zoning overlay. I will note, we did run this by the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization, who was the city's partner in creating the zoning overlay previously, and they are satisfied with what we're showing here. Be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeVita. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner this time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move then to the public portion. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill 5920?
This is Dawn from the clerk's office. I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of bill 5920.
Thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to bill 5920?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak against bill 5920.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing where the bill 5920 is now closed. Is there any council members wishing to make a statement in regards to bills 5920? Okay, I see none. I will now entertain a motion regarding bill 5920?
I move to send bill 5920 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. There has been a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan? Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Bill 5920 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We're going to move on to substitute bill 6020. Clerk Jones, will you please give bill 6020 a second reading?
Yes. Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to Revise Parking and Access Standards.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the substitute bill 6020?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please take the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond? Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 60-20 came before the Zoning and Annexation Committee earlier this afternoon, and we moved that forward to the full council with no recommendation.
Okay.
Is that correct, President White?
That is correct.
For bill 70-20, is that the one that you're on?
No, we're on 6020. I believe 6020 was...
Favorable. Councilwoman Hammond, this bill 60...
Okay. Favorable recommendation. Excuse me.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond and President White. Okay. At this time, is the petitioner present? And I ask that you state your name and address for the record and share with us the key points on the bill that's before us.
Thank you, Council. For the last text amendment, Joe Molnar, Zoning Specialist, with offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. The proposed ordinance before you eliminates parking minimums in the six zoning districts where they still remain. This will remove an unnecessary regulation and cost on small-scale developers while allowing them to establish the amount of parking they feel is necessary for the project to succeed. The city has not seen negative consequences of eliminating the parking minimums in the current districts, which do not have parking minimums. The proposed ordinance retains design standards for parking if parking is provided by the developer, thus ensuring safe and attractive parking facilities when they are still constructed. The staff sent this to the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. At the Plan Commission public hearing, one member of the public spoke and spoke in favor, in favor of the bill as well, and the Plan Commission sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Joe. Again, Michael DeVita, Principal Planner, offices of the County City Building. So the ordinance, as Joe mentioned, would be to change the zoning ordinance to not require any minimum number of off-street parking spaces. Instead, we would really use a market-based approach. Off-street parking is something zoning ordinance can never really get right, because a parking need varies even for the same use, depending on its popularity, its operator, its context, and many other factors. So what we see is the zoning ordinance, no matter the number almost, seems to over-provide off-street parking. So we think the change here will especially benefit the weaker market areas of the city. You're probably all familiar with vacant parking lots, both big and small, across the city. So why would we want to eliminate minimum off-street parking? Primarily because it promotes reinvestment in neighborhoods, avoids an unnecessary cost here. So rather than spending money on parking that's not needed, I think small business owners, people looking to rehab houses within neighborhoods, can better spend that money either investing in their business or in the buildings, rather than on the parking. We see that off-street parking can be $2,000 to $5,000 per space. So let's suppose it's only three parking spaces that they have to build that aren't really necessary for their operations. You're talking a five-figure cost, so $10,000. So we think here can really be an incentive to revitalize those neighborhoods without costing the city anything. It also plays into the cost of housing. Again, if there's... into the cost of housing. Again, if there's parking built that's not necessary, then that cost will be, at least a good portion of that cost, will be passed on to renters. I want to provide an example of what this might look like in South Bend. The council may recall, this property on Lincoln Way West was rezoned late last year to UF, the Urban Flex District, which has no minimum parking requirement. So, it has availability of some spots behind the building, as well as parking on street that will provide more than sufficient parking to meet the needs of this particular property, so it'll work well. If this project came through, let's say, four years ago, the ordinance at that time would have required 16 off-street parking spaces to be provided. Clearly, they wouldn't be able to fit those on the property. So, the property owner's choices would have been, one, to seek a variance on costs and time involved in that and the uncertainty of the public hearing process; or two, buy one of the neighboring properties, tear down the building there to loss tax base to the city. Or probably the most likely outcome here is that the project is just abandoned, and that investment doesn't occur. Second, eliminating the minimum off-street parking requirement will counter negative environmental impacts, avoid excessive paved surfaces and with its potential for runoff or heat island effects, discourage an overly auto-oriented development pattern, too, that encourages more driving than is necessary and with the pollution that results from that. Of course, parking is also a low-value use of land. Had Urban 3, some analytics for cities, do an analysis of the city of South Bend. They found within city limits, on a per-person basis, we have about 1,000 square feet of buildings, about 900 square feet of parking. It's also 800 square feet of streets, which also has some parking on it. So, that space for parking is enough for about two and a half spaces per resident, or another way, for a typical South Bend household would have six parking spaces within city limits. And that's just off-street. So, again, inland use, buildings, roads, and parking all take up about 10% of the city's land area, but a much different story on land use value of improvements, which the city funds its operations, with the value, of course, being in the buildings, parking not providing much value. And if we're tearing down buildings, like the example that you could have seen in that Lincoln Way piece earlier, you're trading more of the high-value use for a lower-value one. Finally, then, eliminating the minimum off-street parking requirement would support neighborhood quality, safety, and vibrancy. It would eliminate some of those kind of dead spaces we have in the city that are really hairs in our urban fabric. So, currently, there's no minimum off-street parking requirement in six of the 12 zoning districts in the city, with certain other uses having no minimum off-street parking requirement regardless of the district. The ordinance also provides some methods for credits to further reduce that off-street parking. So, effectively, many of the districts, even where it's required, have very small or even none parking required. We've had a very good experience with that reduced regulation, as Joe mentioned. We haven't seen any spillover effects for commercial uses or parking in the neighborhoods, creating problems. But we have seen a reinvestment in vacant underutilized properties. So, want to be sure to lock that in, and think now is the time to take that final step. Want to be clear here that no, having no minimum parking requirement doesn't limit parking from being provided. So, property owners would have the choice of how to provide. This also helps when properties are reused, going from one use to another, that they can have different requirements. So, property owners can make that switch as they see fit. So, it's really a market-based approach. We think that doesn't mean, though, that property owners won't be providing any. There's still incentive to have a parking for a convenience of its customers or residents. That's what we see. Almost nobody comes in, even in those districts where no parking is required, that they'll provide it as necessary. So, we'll still see garages provided on houses, a grocery store, or other commercial uses. Restaurants will still provide parking satisfactory for its use. We'll point out for any of those, if there's a few blocks around the city that see parking pressure, the city does have other tools available to address that, such as time-limited spaces. We have residential parking zones that are used around hospitals and universities in the city, disabled parking zones, certainly for those who can't move a great distance. And also say, for any parking that is provided, it's still required to meet the parking standards. So, that's the payment of the parking lot, the size, parking spaces, aisles, providing adequate ADA parking, and doing the required landscape space agreement. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Molnar and Mr. DeVita. Council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. DeVita, I'm wondering, you mentioned the tools on this last slide. If you have already allowed a business to establish without parking, a business basically relying on street parking, and then you find that there is a problem that the residents are not able to park, so we put up residential parking signs, what happens to that business? They're not going to have lot or space on their lot to add parking at that point. How do we correct that?
Yeah, I see that'll be kind of context-specific, but they may have some spaces on their lot. They may have access to shared parking with a neighboring property, depending on what the situation is. From our experience, this really hasn't been a problem. So, I don't anticipate that kind of competition happening a lot.
I can add, too, Lori, when I was in the Clerk's office, we would receive the tickets that officers would write when someone had parked in a residential parking area that wasn't a resident of that area. Like Mike said, it's typically around universities and hospitals. So, IUSB has a few roads in River Park. The residential parking zones aren't typically in front of the business itself. It's typically on a case where it would be in the neighborhood. So, if you thought, for example, along Mishawaka Avenue, those areas don't have residential parking limits, but on the streets that have houses fronting them, that's where you would see the signs that say resident parking permit. So, it doesn't actually go directly in front of the business. It's more in front of the owner's home who requests it.
Right, I understood that. But when we put in those residential parking signs and the restricted parking in previous times, it's been a block of those, not just one random house at a time. And I'm wondering if that would impact the business's ability to then find alternate parking?
So, you could do it where you could have, the way we do time zones downtown, where you could have, if it really was just a stretch of, say, three houses on a block that were being, people were parking in front of them for, say, the business was also on that block. I believe there are a few cases near Notre Dame where it's actually the two signs, they have arrows pointing at each other on the block saying, just within this portion, there's residential permit parking only. So, that would be one way to handle it, where even if it was, say, a business and a home shared the same block, you could have just that block portioned out for the residents if they, you know, requested it as such.
Thank you. And Chair, may I ask a second question?
Wasn't that two questions you asked already?
Nope, they were the same.
Okay, then absolutely.
Can you tell me what other cities you have looked at that have completely done away with minimum required parking?
There's a range of cities that have done so. Probably the largest is Buffalo, New York, has, in some respects, a fairly similar market conditions to here. On the small places, Lakeville, for instance, has done it. Then, many cities, especially in recent years, have maybe not fully eliminated, but fully eliminated, not fully eliminated citywide, but have fully eliminated from certain districts within the city and cut back on the requirements in other districts.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe I seen a hand up for Councilman Davis. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I couldn't see your hand here. It was up and then it left. So, did you have a question?
Yes. I'm having a really difficult time understanding what's going on here. Are we working at taking away the red tape to speed of development? Or are we working, you know, in such a way to, I guess, create better parking?
I think it's really to simplify the investment in the neighborhoods. So, but I think it also would improve the parking situation or the neighborhood quality.
So, is this like an extension to what Smart Streets was supposed to perform or is performing?
I think, well, the relationship is in promoting our investment in the city. I mean, this Smart Streets handled the parking on the streets. So, this is a zoning matter on the private property side, so different in that respect.
What I'm asking is, because wasn't the purpose of Smart Streets was to get people onto the streets? Now, we're taking them off the streets. And look, I'm just trying to get a grasp, a handle on this, because I've been following this, but it doesn't make sense to me. And that just probably is me. I probably got it.
Smart Street was to, the bigger part was to promote the quality of the city and investment there, sort of traffic calming. One piece to that is having that both calms traffic and supports, especially neighborhood-based business, is by having on-street parking available. So, this is looking off-street. It doesn't necessarily force people on-street. We have a lot of experience with businesses, and they'll set up, almost always provide their own off-street parking to the degree to which they see is necessary. From my perspective, is they don't want to compete with anybody else. They typically don't even consider, like, the number of on-street parking adjacent to them, even though those can be used in terms of meeting their needs. So, the point here is really to not force off-street parking that's not necessary to be constructed and maintained.
Thank you, sir.
And I believe I seen another hand up, but I can't. Clerk Jones, I'm not sure who that is.
Actually, it is Angela Smith.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. Angela Smith, Department of Community Investment, offices located on 14th floor of the county city building. I just want to clarify, this is not a parking maximum. So, in no way are we telling businesses they shouldn't provide parking or that they can't provide parking. It's simply that if they feel for their business model, they don't need as many parking spaces as deemed in our chart that we have developed in previous ordinances, that they could go ahead and proceed with the amount of parking that they need.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other council members that wish to, have a question for the petitioners? I don't see any other hands. So, at this time, we are going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6020?
This is Dawn from the Clerk's office, and I do not see anyone from the public that is wishing to speak in favor of Bill 6020.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition?
I don't see anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 6020.
Thank you. Councilman Warner, I see your hand up. Did I miss something?
I just had a quick comment before we vote, if there's nobody from the public.
There is not. So, please, at this time, we will close the public hearing portion of, and if, let me see, I'm sorry. Yeah, so at this point, we are going to close the public hearing on Bill 6020. So, at this time, if council members would like to make a statement regarding that, now is the time. So, Councilman Warner, you wish to make a statement?
Yeah, thank you. This has come up twice recently. I support this. And Henry kind of alluded to it, that this kind of gets rid of the red tape. We saw this with the drive-and-shine, with the car wash. They came to us asking for an exception, and I don't have the number exactly right, but I think they would have had to have 30 parking spots for a car wash where people don't come and park. They drive through, and maybe they've got a, you know, half dozen employees. So, I think this only makes sense. And then, second, when you look at a map of, the vast majority of the city already has no minimums. When you look at a map of where this affects, it's kind of the main corridors, the areas where there's already commercial development that's happened, places where there are strip malls and larger shopping centers and things like that. So, I think this is a good idea, and I'll be voting in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warner. Clerk Jones, could you please give me the order in which I see all these hands popping up?
Okay. You have Councilmember Davis. That was next. And I'm not sure, you have Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Hammond, Councilmember Wax, and Councilmember Lee.
Thank you so much, Clerk Jones. Councilman Davis, you wish to make a statement regarding Bill 6020?
Yeah. And this is the other part of why I was saying about, and please don't take it as I'm hitting at someone. But there are like a couple of things going on here. And yes, we are talking about eliminating red tape. We are talking about making, I guess, the city a little bit more business-friendly. I get all of that. But the main quarter of discussion that Troy just brought up, and I think Mr. DeVita's talked about, you know, we were talking about Lincoln Way and Western, where we have a drastic change in traffic patterns and even traffic moving through. And so, it's, I just believe that there is more in this than just parking spaces. I believe that we're challenging the traffic patterns within our city, especially these main corridors. I think we're challenging a number of deals that we've, I guess, we thought we paid for, you know, some years ago with the Smart Street Initiative, and hoping that that will increase businesses in those given areas. That hasn't necessarily happened. And there is really no data to support one way or the other. And not only that, we're not even, like, having any discussion about forward movement either, because all the money has been invested. So, yeah, we are at surface talking about parking spaces. But when we get to talk about parking spaces and increasing traffic or decreasing traffic, ensuring new development in areas that need and increasing traffic or decreasing traffic, ensuring new development in areas that need it, these things tend to have unintended consequences. And I would love to have a larger discussion on how those things are working. Yeah, I get it. Take the red tape away. You are completely right. But the other areas that don't necessarily behave like a 20, with a state rule 23 could behave, it doesn't, it's not the same as a Lincoln Way or a Western. So I'm looking forward, hopefully very, very soon, that we have a discussion with the department head, more of a discussion about whether the department head or even the city planners on how these things actually work, and how do we move forward as it relates to development and tax-based expansion in our areas. Because I don't, I think this may have some unintended consequences that may hurt the areas that are already hurting. But I will be supporting it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Next, we're going to go to Councilwoman Hammond.
The comment I would like to make is I don't see the rationale to go from 6% to 100% of all of these zones. I would much prefer to see them leave parking requirements in U1 and U3s. I would have, wishing I had been cognizant enough earlier to oppose the U2s. I really believe this is not something we need to see in the heavy residential areas. So I have not heard anything to change my mind. I do not think I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Next, we have Councilman Wax.
Thank you. I just want to state that I appreciate you guys trying to find ways to reform the current codes to ensure that individuals can make the best decisions that they know for themselves to be best for them instead of overlaying and requiring them to maintain situations that may not be in their best interest. So I appreciate looking out for ways that we trust our citizens and our businesses to do what's best for themselves as they know what's best for themselves generally. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wax. Councilman Lee, you have a statement?
Yes, I would just like to say that I wish, I wish this would have been in place 20 years ago when I first started pastor, because it caused me to have, this issue caused me to have to purchase a house and land next to my church. So I'm glad to see that someone is actually looking and seeing that if you be proactive and really look through things, it can better benefit the individuals in our community that may be going into non-traditional places. I was amazed because I was like, to put a church in a residential area was a good thing. And, you know, we went through a lot of hoops in order to do that. But I wish this would have been around 20 years ago, and so I'll support it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Lee. Is there any other council members that would like to make a statement? Okay. At this point, then, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 6020.
I make a motion, we send Bill 6020 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I second.
Okay, the bill, there has been a motion and second. Clerk Jones, would you please take the roll call on Bill 6020?
Yes. Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
I have a question for Bob, Paul, and Terry. Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Yes.
My question, Bob, you know, I wanted some caveats on that vote or on this motion. Is there any way that we can place that on there, or is it too late?
It's too late. The motion is already made with no caveats.
Right. All right. Thank you. All right. Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Nay.
President White.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to Bill 7020. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 7020, oh, I'm sorry, Bill 6020 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendations. My apology, I got ahead of myself. Now we'll move to Bill 7020. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 7020 a second reading?
Yes. 7020, Public Hearing on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1915 North Bendix.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there a committee report?
Sorry about that. Yes, Chair, Bill 7020 came before the Zoning and Annexation Committee this afternoon, and this is the bill that was sent forward with no recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Is the petitioner present? I ask that you state your name and address and share with us the key points of the bill that's before us.
Yes, thank you, counsel. For the last time tonight, Joe Mulnar, zoning specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. This is a special exception bill coming before you today for 1915 Bendix. Here is Bendix running north-south. The airport is just off-screen here. All of these properties surrounding the subject property are zoned I industrial. This special exception is for heavy industrial use. So even though the property is already zoned industrial, if you ever want to do something that the zoning ordinance classifies as heavy industrial, there is this extra special exception process just to make sure that the project is reviewed even further. We went into it at committee a little bit, but all the properties, if it's around this property are I industrial. We think that this is a proper place to put, if you're going to have heavy industrial in the city and the business that comes with it, it's appropriate to put it in place that really is insulated from anything else except other industrial purposes. This basically serves as an industrial park. So the staff believed that this was a suitable location for the use, which should not negatively impact the broader community and should help retain a business in the city. The staff recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals was favorable, and the Board of Zoning Appeals is sending it to you as well with a favorable recommendation. And if the petitioner's online, they could speak as well.
Okay, Randall Ray Greenley, HB Fuller, Royal Adhesives and Sealants. The address there is 2001 West Washington Street. I do have a couple other people on the call, and I'll just mention their names. Bob Smith, he's our PSM Senior Engineering Regional Manager from HB Fuller. His office is also in South Bend. Bob will be talking to everyone about risk management for the project. Our tabletop meetings we had with the fire department, police, and South Bend Airport Safety Manager prior to startup of this project. And, you know, during, Bob will talk a little bit more about this, but HB Fuller, I mean, we're always do the, you know, best that we can in administrative controls and mechanical controls to protect the safety of our employees as well as the neighborhood and surrounding properties. So also Chuck Martin is on this call. He's the Area Manager for DP Fire Systems. Chuck is installing the fire protection system on this project and will discuss the deluge system, deluge system designed by VFP's expert on flammable propellant tanks. We have a 3D drawing we'd like to show everyone as well that Chuck will talk through. And I think Joe kind of covered what we're trying to do there, but we're basically just purchasing and installing a modular steel canister filling house, adhesive pump house, and a propellant tank farm outside on the west end of this existing lease building. We also installed a four-hour firewall next to, or we will be installing a firewall, four-hour firewall next to the existing building west wall. And that's just a protective building. So a little bit of background, HB Fuller's large roofing customers are wanting a faster, more economic way to apply adhesive to their substrates to fully adhere their commercial roofing membrane system. The spraying of the adhesive to the substrate is much faster than rolling on liquid adhesive, which we also supply to those roofing customers. We currently make liquid adhesive for this, for the spraying adhesive that goes in like a five-gallon canister. We make that at South Bend and our Houston Texas plant. So and then it's sent to like a third party that's in another state, and once the canisters fail, it's shipped back to Bendix and then shipped to our roofing customer. So we think it makes a lot of sense to put that whole operation in one particular city. And so we looked at two possible sites. One was South Bend, one was Houston. The logical choice was South Bend since we already make the adhesive at our main plant, and we currently ship the canister out of Bendix warehouse, this 1915 warehouse. We have also worked with the city of South Bend and other projects in the main plant, and they have always been supportive and work with us on any issues that may have come up. So we're spending about $2.1 million on this project, and we're adding six new employees on the initial phase. There are two other future phases to this project that will allow us to fill a high-volume two-part urethane, which is non-flammable, as well as a small 13-ounce sprayable adhesive that you have probably seen in Lowe's, Monarch, Home Depot, and probably other stores. We will need to purchase more equipment, and I estimate that to be about $500,000, and add a minimum of six additional more employees to support these future phases. And also, I just wanted to point out, at the main plant, which is on 2001 West Washington Street in South Bend, not very long ago, we had 65 hourly employees, and now we have over 100. And I think that number's going to grow, and we've added a lot of, you know, clerical-type jobs and salary jobs as well. Plus, we have a lot of employees coming in from corporate, which is in Minneapolis, Minnesota. They're flying into South Bend, as well as other consultants and stuff, because, you know, the plant is so busy right now, we can't keep up with all the volume. So that's why we're adding more jobs and buying, you know, other equipment to support, you know, that incoming business. So, hey, Bob, I don't know if you can share the screen, but maybe, I don't know if there's any questions, share the screen on the plot plan.
I show it's being shared. Can people see it?
Yes, we can see it now.
I think Joe showed the same thing, but I just, this may give you a better view. Bob, if you want to point out the, like, the fill house, the main canister fill house right there, whereas that's that. And then go down to the south, Bob. That is the pump house. And then go further down south, right there, we, you know, that's a pad, we're going to pour the pad, you know, for this future small aerosol can fill house. So and then you can probably see the, up in the top left-hand corner there, you can see the two propellant tanks. And the other tanks down below here are one CO2, which is non-flammable, and the other is just water storage. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. Otherwise, we can go. Bob, you can go ahead. Go ahead and put up the other drawing of the 3D drawing, Bob. Okay. Chuck, do you want to just jump in and talk about this? You on, Chuck? Chuck Martin?
Sure. So my name is Chuck Martin. I'm with VFP Fire Systems, and my address is 1912 Lilac Trails Court here in South Bend. Really, we have two systems proposed for this facility. As Randy was pointing out, the pump house and the fill house, which are near the building. Those will be protected with a pre-action system. And so that means the sprinkler would have to go off and detection would have to go off before water would be sprayed into there. But the main system that I like to talk about is the deluge system, which would, which would protect the pumps, but mainly the cylinders right there, the tanks themselves. And this is a deluge system. That's an automatic system that has a dry pilot actuation, and it's designed and installed per NSPA 15. And that's going to spray water all on all sides of both of the cylinders. And it requires so much water that we had to figure on bringing a new eight-inch main all the way through from the front of the building to the back. So this would be a lot of water going off at once, not only to extinguish a fire, but also to cool the tanks in case there's a fire nearby. So this is, like I say, designed in accordance with NSPA 15 for water spray fix systems. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chuck. Hey, Bob, you want to talk about risk management, then?
Yes. My name's Bob Smith. I'm the Regional Process Safety Senior Engineer for HB Fuller, based in South Bend, Indiana, at our manufacturing facility on 2001 West Washington Street. I can tell you, this project will comply with the requirements of the EPA's Risk Management Program and OSHA's Process Safety Management Program. Among other things, they require a thorough understanding of process parameters, a preventive maintenance program to maintain system integrity, periodic communication with the city and local officials, and also that we conform to the compliance to the recognized and generally accepted good engineering standards, which will include the API standards, American Petroleum Institute, as well as the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA's, in particular NFPA 58 for liquefied net, or liquefied petroleum gases. We will be, as part of that communication with the city, we have had several tabletop meetings already centered around our Bendix, one for warehousing, and also an initial, an initial project kickoff that included people from the fire department, the police department, and also the airport. One, we want to share process information, and two, we want to develop a working relationship. We also have done a process hazard analysis on the process to identify possible hazardous scenarios and determine the risks associated with each scenario. Part of that is, we want to make sure the proper engineered safeguards are in place to mitigate potential hazards. Again, confirm compliance with regular gaps, recognize and generally accepted good engineering practices, and to reduce risk to as low as reasonably practical. We want to be able to operate this safe and comply with all standards and regulations that are out there. that are out there. Uh, questions?
Thank you Bob. I just wanna maybe say, you know, one more thing, I mean, I think this project is, is not only good for HB Fuller, and, but I think it's also good uh, for South Bend. And I think uh, you know, we're gonna create more jobs and everything, as I said. So, anyway, I would appreciate, you know, our approval on this project, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenlee. Uh, council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Uh, Councilman Lee?
Yes, thank you, uh, Councilman Nizgaski. Um, just wanted to, to talk about the, the option of it being moved somewhere else, and if you can just talk about how uh, how uh, you guys produce the heat, the adhesive here, have to ship it away, then bring it back and all of that, and how that, that flow helps you guys being able to open up this building um, over on Bendix.
Okay, um, yeah, thank you. We currently have four employees there, and um, yeah, one of the things I didn't bring up was that if we decided to move it to Houston, then we would have to eliminate that warehouse, and it'll be, you know, and then the employees there, the existing employees would be gone. Uh, but I think, you know, with, with the logistics that I talked about earlier, um, you know, with that third party being in another state, and, you know, right now, we make one adhesive in South Bend, we make the other adhesive in, in Houston, Texas. It just makes good sense to bring it all to South Bend. And, and the other thing about South Bend is the fact that, you know, the warehouses, the warehouse and, and the main plant's in South Bend. So, we can make the adhesive and just ship it directly, you know, to, to the warehouse to fulfill it. And we can actually control the inventories much better as well, since it's so close. So, we'll probably just like make the order and then move the material over as we need it from, from the main plant. So, that, that's a big advantage for us. Did I answer your question, Kenneth?
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Davis, I think you had your hand up as well?
Yeah, um, and this is a question as far as transportation. Um, Mr. Greenlee, this is Henry, how are you doing, sir? Happy New Year to you. Well, uh, what, what mode of transportation do you uh, use when moving your product from place to place?
I think we have a shuttle truck, we have, we have, I'm sorry, we have a shuttle truck that moves it from uh, the main plant to Bendix, and then obviously for when we're shipping product, um, you know, either from Houston or to our customers, it's, it usually, the current products go out on flatbeds, but the canisters will go just in a, you know, a covered uh, semi. Did I answer your question?
Yes. Yeah, so what route would you use? Would you go north on, was that north, is that north? Would you go, would that be kinda like northeast? Yeah, be north, would you go north on Bendix, or would you go south? Like what route?
Go ahead. I don't know which way they're going right now, but you know, if you have a preferred route or whatever, we could certainly go that route.
No, sir, that's not it. This has something to do with another discussion that we're having about traffic patterns and stuff.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Depending on where you're going and how you're going and come in and come out. Bendix was just changed over uh, due to another smart streets project, and I noticed that a lot of the semis or trucks that you will be using will have to enter in on Bendix at some point. And if they come in over there by Bowlin Park, or you know, further north by Nips Parkway, there may be a, a really hard, difficult problem if there's a lot of traffic there for your truck to move through. That's why I was asking the question, but.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Is there any other, um, anybody else wishing to ask the petitioner a question? Okay, I do not see anybody at this time, so I am gonna go to the public portion hearing. Um, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 7020?
This is Dawn from the clerk's office. There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak on Bill, in support of Bill 7020.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone present to speak in opposition of Bill 7020.
Okay, thank you Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 7020 is now closed. Um, is there any council members that wish to make a statement regarding Bill 20? And I see Councilman Henry Davis, you have your hand up.
And also, Councilman Lee has his hand up.
Oh, thank you Clerk Jones, and Councilman Lee.
In my statement, uh, and I wanna thank the company for coming in, and, and Mr. Randy coming in and explaining what's going on with the company and expansion. I think it's awesome we're able to add more jobs to this community. Uh, I just wanted to explain my, um, no recommendation vote earlier, uh, because I, I, I don't want anyone to get confused as to me sounding like I didn't wanna hear anymore, or, or even want, or even think that this was, you know, a no-go. The point of it is that I wanted to make sure, and this is even for the petitioner, that when we do our business, we do it properly, decently, and in order. And so, if we were to give a great favorable recommendation for you, leaving either there without even explaining why you were there, then that means that we need to do it for everybody else, and that would have been very unfair. So, I just wanted to make sure we set a precedent here at the, at the committee level to ensure that you have proper and sufficient time to explain why you're here, and that we also get proper, sufficient time to ask questions and hear you out. It was just something that we were not in control of, and that means the time, and so I didn't want to um, uh, give you a, or give anyone else a false uh, understanding on how we are supposed to do business. I think everybody gets the same treatment when they come through here. But again, thank you again for your investment, and I look forward to you guys opening up.
Yeah, thank you, Henry. I understand.
Okay, thank you Councilman Davis. Councilman Lee?
I would just like to say that uh, being able to see a big building in the first district, um, be utilized and uh, repurposed to continue to keep a company in South Bend is very important. The fact that they're bringing nice level jobs to the city, or staying here and not going to Houston, and how the city of South Bend is able to be a partner with a business that's been here for a very long time. My father actually used to work uh, um, as part, part of that company. So, it, it's, it's good to see that they're expanding, there's gonna be opportunities for good paying jobs, and they've taken the, all of the safety issues. Uh, they've, they've done a great job making sure that they addressed all the safety issues, and the, um, the change is just, um, making it where they, uh, because it's already an industrial complex, it's already set up for that. It's a great fit, and we're just glad that a building, a big building in the first district is gonna be able to be utilized, and people be able to get good, good paying jobs. So, thank you Randy and everyone from HB Fuller.
You're welcome, Kenneth.
Okay. Okay, well, next we're gonna move on to Councilman Wax.
Thank you, I just wanted to uh, thank you Randy, and of the rest of you. I just love the fact that we have a business that's been here for a long time and wants to continue its growth here and expand, especially with new additional jobs, and I just wanted to wish you the best of success now and in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, Clerk Jones, I'm not sure, is there, did I miss somebody that has a hand up that I'm? Okay, hands up, but they weren't putting down.
The hands that I still see up is Councilmember Wax, Councilmember Lee, and I know he already spoke, and, and Councilmember Davis, I don't know if they forgot to.
Okay.
Take their hands down.
Okay, thank you. So, is there anyone else wish to make a statement? Okay, then I will move on and entertain a motion regarding Bill 7020. Is there a motion on Bill 7020?
I make a motion, we send Bill 7020 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there has been a motion regarding Bill 7020, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you Clerk Jones. We are now gonna move on to Bill 7120. I believe Clerk Jones, you still have to read this bill, even though it has been a motion to table, is that correct?
I believe so.
Yes, Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 7120 a second reading?
Yes. Nizgaski, Attorney.
Yes, President White.
He had his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Attorney Palmer, you had a, was I correct in?
No, uh, it actually is not necessary to read the bill, it did not come out of committee, so it does not go into committee of the whole for a second rea, excuse me, second reading.
So, do I have to have a motion, I don't have to have a motion to table either?
No, that was done at the committee level.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, if that's the case, at this point, I will entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion was moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please take the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
I had my hand up before we even started this process, and I, you know, I got the um, the email from the mayor, just like everyone else did. Uh, I just have a simple question, uh, and, and I needed to be answered before I vote. And I don't know, you know, I guess no one saw my, my hand up.
No, I'm sorry, I did not.
Will, will the proper resources be available um, for the clerk's office to ensure a successful passage at the next council meeting? Because I, I would hate to keep going around in circles with this. I mean, we have a, the, the mayor has a legal team, we have a lawyer, um, and so documents need to be read over, and language needs to be consistent across the board. There should not be a problem with presenting a document that is consistent with what's already on paper, meaning the ordinance.
Okay, as a point of order, Councilman Davis, we're, we're voting on to dissolve from the committee of the whole to report back to full council.
Yeah, I know that, but the problem was, I had my hand up to talk about what we just uh, about the bill that Dawn had in front of us, the resolution.
Oh, yeah, we had on that. I'm confused.
No, I'm not, I, I got what you're doing. What I'm saying is, before we resolve back to uh, the, the full council, I wanted to be, I wanted to talk about what was already being talked about. I had my hand up, and I wasn't recognized, and so then we went to a full vote. I, I just wanna make sure Dawn's office has the necessary resources so that we don't come back here two weeks from now asking for more information.
I don't even know how to respond to that, because there is a motion on the floor, it's already in the middle of the vote, I believe that we have to proceed with the vote.
You can respond to it, you can just say yes or no.
Attorney Palmer hand is up.
I, I may be misunderstanding your, your question, uh, Councilman Davis. Uh, are you talking about the CRB bill, the resolution?
Yes.
We haven't got resolutions yet, uh, you'll have an opportunity for full discussion of the resolution after the third readings of the ordinances.
But one reason, okay, I'm glad you just clarified, but I, I'm not far off from what we were just talking about, we were just talking about that, am I correct?
No.
We did not talk about that?
No.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
You're fine.
No, it's okay, we're just, we're voting on to dissolve.
That's my fault, I, I could've sworn that we said that we were gonna be tabling it.
No, that was the, another.
That was another bill.
That was the bill, I, I asked for a point of order if I had to ask, have a motion to table it, since it was done in committee and I was told.
Okay, well, I misunderstood where we were at, thank you, I'm sorry. Aye is my vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you Clerk Jones.
Thank you as well. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Uh, Clerk Jones, would you please give substitute bill 58-20 a third reading? We do not have to accept this as a substitute, as it was accepted in the committee of the whole. So, will you please give substitute bill 58-20 a third reading?
Yes. 5820, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to make miscellaneous technical changes for clarification and consistency, and to correct typographical errors in various articles.
Thank you Clerk Jones. Councilwoman Sheila Nizgaski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding substitute bill 58-20?
Yes, President White, Bill 5820 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
At this time, council members, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 58-20, substitute bill.
Motion for passage?
Second.
We have a most, uh, motion for passage, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, substitute bill 58-20 has been passed. Clerk Jones, please give substitute bill 59-20 a third reading.
5920, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to reformat and clarify the NNZL Northeast Neighborhood Zoning Overlay.
Councilwoman Sheila Nizgaski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding substitute bill 59-20?
Yes, President White, Bill 5920 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion regarding substitute bill 59-20.
Moving for passage?
Make motion for passage?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill, substitute bill 59-20 has passed. Clerk Jones, would you please give substitute bill 60-20 a third reading?
6020, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code to revise parking and access standards.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding substitute bill 60-20?
Yes, President White. Bill 60-20 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I would now like to entertain a motion regarding substitute bill 60-20.
Move for passage of 60-20.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Nay.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Substitute bill dash sixty, um, sixty dash twenty has now passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give a third reading to Bill 70-20?
7020, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1915 North Bendix.
Thank you. Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, President White. Bill 7020 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion for substitute bill 70-20.
I'd like to make a motion for passage?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Substitute bill 70-20 has passed. We'll now move into the resolution section of our meeting. Clerk Jones, will you please read resolution 21-01?
21-01, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the job description of the community police, of the Community Police Review Board Director of the Review Office.
Thank you. Is there a committee report at this time? Yes.
Yes, the resolution came before the Community Relations Committee and was sent with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. At this time, is there a presenter? I do ask that you ask, I do ask that you state your name and address, please.
Yes, Dawn Jones, City Clerk, offices on the fourth floor of the County City Building. Okay, and we will share the presentation from this, from this afternoon because we did make some changes.
Excuse me, before you start, Clerk Jones, Attorney Palmer has his hands up. Attorney Palmer?
Yes, since there were changes made, uh, since there were changes made in the ordinance and the appendix.
Okay, I just caught that. Thank you so much. Um, to the number.
I can't hear.
No, I don't know. Due to the changes that have been made in terms of the job posting and also in regards to other comments that have been made, we need to accept the substitute version of resolution 21-01. Is there a motion to accept the substitute version?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
So we'll now be asking for the presenter to speak to the substitute version of the resolution and/or the job posting and to point out the areas that have been changed.
Yes. Roger, could you share the job description, please?
Yes, I'll do that now.
Okay, you gotta make it bigger. Okay. The, the job description.
Yes, this is the resolution. Job description is opening right now.
Okay. Okay, okay, the first change is in the Community Review Board summary. The, we took off the part of the board possesses subpoena authority, and then we also added the South Bend Common Council is charged with appointing the volunteer citizens to the CRB in coordination with the mayor. That was the changes for that section. And the next change happened in essential duties and responsibilities. The previous, it stated that recruits and trains appointed board members, it now states onboard and trains appointed board members. So it takes the director part out in regard to recruiting board members. It clarifies that a little bit more. The next section is in education and qualifications. Wait, okay, essential duties and responsibilities. It's it stated assist citizens in filing complaints, and now states ensures residents have access to the complaint process established under South Bend Ordinance 2021. The next section is education and qualifications, and we have removed the word, the two words of law enforcement. Okay, and those were the changes that we made to the job description. Are there any questions regarding that?
Councilmembers, do you have any questions regarding the job description and the changes? But also, I do know that Councilmember Henry Davis wanted to make some comments. We've all have received an email from the mayor regarding looking at the job description, and I wanted to make sure, Councilmember Davis, that you have opportunity to ask your questions first.
I guess I unloaded on the wrong thing earlier. Excuse me. Forgive me for doing that.
Can I say one thing before you make your comments in regard to the email from the mayor? I did, after that, after receiving that email, we made sure that he had a copy, the latest version of the, the latest version of the job description. So he does have that. So go ahead.
And so you, and so you feel fine going forward with the vote? Because if not, then my comments mean nothing. I just wanted to make sure that if we were going to table this, that you will have full and free access to his legal team and also obviously our counsel, a lawyer, to make sure the language was consistent across the board. Because that's the only thing we're talking about, we're talking about language.
Okay, I have, I have submitted this resolution and a job description multiple times to council members and to, and to legal, and to the administration, to council legal, and to my legal. And so I was told that it was consistent. So if there are any questions in regard to the job description and/or the resolution, please let me know because we've had ample time to review this.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan, followed by Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski, and any other council members, if you just raise your hand, I'll make sure that you be recognized.
Thank you Chair White, President White. Thank you Clerk Jones and your staff for your work on the PD and the resolution. I had asked earlier in committee for inclusion of more language from the ordinance in order to make the job description more consistent with the ordinance. And so can you tell me where you included that?
Okay.
Or did you?
No, it's, we didn't make any changes to the job description. The, the language is, is more so in the resolution, talking about the job description. The, the actual job description was completed by administration. They looked at the ordinance and they came up with the job descriptions, with the duties, and, and everything that's on this job description came up with administration. It has been reviewed, it's been compared, and this, and it's also been compared to other job descriptions around the country. And so this is what the Human Resource Office with administration, the mayor's office, came up with.
Okay, Clerk Jones, it just, from our previous conversation and how that conversation went, I'm just not confident that this is a draft of the, of a PD that I can approve. So that's why, that's why I'm asking the question. So I, to answer my question, I'm hearing that there was no inclusion of additional language from the ordinance in this version of the, of the position description. Is that correct?
I would say your interpretation is correct, but let me ask this. What is, what isn't, what is it about this job description that's not consistent with the ordinance?
My concern was just to echo some language from the ordinance into the job description for consistency sake. And, and I mentioned several, I mentioned the section of the ordinance that you could pull language from. I don't want to take the time to do that piece by piece here. It may be worth another draft. Is, so I, I'm moving into comments, I don't want to do that. You've answered my question, thank you.
Thank you. I'll now go to Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski. I see three other hands up. Clerk Jones, can you help me make sure that I will recognize individuals in order?
Yes.
Niskoski?
Yes, thank you. And I would like to thank you for the work that the clerk's office has done on this. It's brought before us. However, in committee, there was a question brought up about, that just concerns me. Was brought up about how the appointing the volunteer citizens are. And there was said with the mayor, with coordination with the mayor. And then they said, well, that was put in because there was a state code citing that he has to now be involved in that. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that point because I remember all the committee meetings we had, and it was pretty clear that this board wanted to remain without, you know, the mayor's influence, I guess, if you want to say. So I'm just a little, I just want to make sure that we're clear on, you know, what is the state code that says that he has to be involved with the board appointments? That's supposed to be by the council members. What's the Indiana code? Because my understanding was that he was not going to be involved with any of those appointments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Niskoski. We'll make sure that we circle back so you get those questions answered. I did see a hand of Attorney Palmer and then Councilman Henry Davis. Then I would like to make some comments, but I want to make sure all the council members have opportunity to ask questions. We're not making comments at this time, we're asking questions. Attorney Palmer, did I see your hand up?
Yes, President White. To, to provide an answer to Councilwoman Niskoski, the mayor or the clerk's office has to make the decision to hire the director because that's a paid position. The board members themselves can be appointed by the common council. And as this job description states that the council will be doing that in coordination with the mayor's office, but it is the common council itself that makes the, that appoints the volunteer citizens to the board.
Thank you Attorney Palmer. I'll now move to, I believe, a council member.
Go ahead.
I will move to Councilmember Henry Davis. Then I want to make sure that all council members have opportunity to ask questions regarding the information that has been presented, and Clerk Jones will come back to you for rebuttal.
Okay.
Councilmember Henry Davis?
Clerk Jones, what was the process in creating this job description? Did it go through human resources and also the attorneys at the administration level?
Yes, it did. It went through, I met with, first of all, I received an example of the job description from you and I believe Lori, the one that you, and we gave a copy of the job description that we had received previously along with the ordinance and, along with the information from NACO and the Department of Justice. We gave all of that to the mayor, to the mayor's office, to his Human Resource Department. And I met with the mayor, and he asked for two different job descriptions, which we did get. And so we went with the one that had the, and the, both job descriptions came from administration. And so we went with the one that was closest to the ordinance, and so that's why we chose this one. And so that was the process. They came up with the descriptions. We sent out the descriptions that we received from Human Resource. We sent it to the council and we sent it to legal council. We didn't get really anything back in regard to feedback. We just kept moving forward and we sent it out again. And so I've, I probably have sent this job description out maybe three or four times in the last two months. And so we just recently got feedback yesterday and today. And so it's, it's really kind of unfair to do it that way. I mean, we came up with this and we sent it out and we wanted feedback, and we've been asking for feedback, and this is the night, this is the midnight hour, and we're just now getting feedback. So I'm just, I'm just sharing that.
Okay, so I think I lost. So you are not getting feedback from the administration, or you're, are you getting feedback from the administration?
Well, no, they gave us, they gave us the, the job descriptions. That, the job descriptions came from administration.
Okay, so, so let me walk down this path with you. Let me walk down, because I've got you more confused, and bear with me, please. So when you got the job descriptions from administration, they, in, along with the mayor's office and Human Resources, you guys sat down and put together the language for this job description that we're looking at. Yes or no?
Yes, actually, we, we gave the language from.
No, no, hold on. I'm just asking. That is, that's what happened.
Yes.
And so when you received the back, this was based upon what the, the. this was based upon what, um, the, the, the experts say is okay? Meaning our experts, meaning the legal team and also Human Resources?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well now, are there any other council members that have any questions?
You have, uh, Councilmember Lee and Councilmember McBride.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilwoman McBride.
I yield my time. I'm, I'm, I'm just sitting back listening.
Councilwoman McBride?
Thank you. Um, I think I'm getting a little, um, confused as well. I know that there had been back and forth, um, job descriptions sent and changed and tweaked and emails back from administration and going back and forth. And I'm just, I just want to make sure. One, I think Bob answered, uh, my questions that I was going to ask about clarifying the roles of the council in our selection. Um, and I view it similarly as what we do now with our, uh, standing committees. However, I wanted to see if, uh, I see we received an email from the clerk's office and from the mayor's office. And would like to, um, hear if, um, the revisions that were submitted just prior to tonight's meeting are, um, agreed upon by both the clerk and the mayor's office? So is, is someone here from the administration to, uh, clarify so we can move forward as well?
Yes, you have, uh, Mayor Mueller that has his hand up. Thank you. Mayor Mueller?
Thank you, President White. This is the appropriate time to try to clarify where things stand. Um, you know, following some of the conversations, I, I wanted to go back to see exactly how we may have missed it on our side, on HR and the administration. And, uh, you know, maybe the clerk's office can correct us if we're wrong. But the, the last time there was correspondence on this job description was in October. And, you know, that was shortly there, shortly after the ordinance passed. And i- if we recall, there were some, uh, last minute changes to the job description or, or to the ordinance uh, as it, right before it passed. And so one of the big changes is, was that the office moved from the mayor's office to the clerk's office. And if you recall, the, uh, the draft of the position description that, uh, was circulated, uh, early last week, it still had, uh, mayor's office in that. So I believe that draft was, the, the draft we hadn't been updated since, since October. And, um, there was a council committee meeting, I believe at the beginning of December. And, and there were, there was a thought of, where is this, uh, office going? Is it going to be, uh, you know, investigative heavy? Or is it going to be, uh, more of facilitating the review board and potential, uh, investigations when necessary? I believe the, you know, I'm not going to put words into the council members mouths, but I believe the, uh, outcome of that meeting was, um, to just get the ball rolling, try to get, you know, get an, get a director in place and get a, get a review board, uh, members in place and a process to do that. And, uh, you know, working through, through that, that front. We, I, I believe council members were on most of the correspondences, uh, trying to get the most recent, up-to-date job description. And the one that we received last week was the one, only one that, that we had seen since October. Um, and then we've tried to figure out. This is, to be clear, this is something that, um, the council, this is a, council is, is appointing the board members and, and the clerk's office is administering the office. And so by, by design, the, the administration is not trying to, to, uh, you know, we're here to facilitate. And obviously, at the end of the day, we have to work, our Department of Police has to work, uh, with this board. But this is not something that the, by design, is not something that the administration owns. So we're trying to be, uh, cognizant of, of our role. Now, it, it, we're always happy to help and, and we want to move this forward and make this work. And, and that is the spirit of, of the engagement. I, I have a monthly meeting with Clerk Jones and, and have given feedback at those meetings. And, uh, you know, some has been incorporated, some has not. And, you know, what remains are, are some of the, the, the still, the, the pieces that, uh, that have not been incorporated. But I guess I, I will just, you know, if you look at the job description, the first line of title is not the title that's in the ordinance. The, the type, the, the resolution, uh, is correct. It has Director of Review Office. If you look at the ordinance, Review Office also means, uh, the Director of Community Police Review Office. So either one, uh, would make sense. Director of Community Police Review Office or Director of Review Office as in the, the resolution. If you look at the job description, the, the first line is Director of Community Review Board. Um, there, there are other issues. So just from the very beginning, uh, you know, we're not off being consistent with the ordinance. Uh, and you, you move down the line. And thi- this is something where most positions aren't defined, uh, in statute. Whereas, you know, the council, and we worked hard all through last year to get language. And it's pretty specific, um, in, in the ordinance about what the roles of, of the director are, what they are and, and what they are not. And so we are concerned that there are, there seem to be some things that are moving away outside of what the ordinance has put forth, as well as some things that are in the ordinance that are not included i- in this job description. So, you know, the administration is here, you know, I, I heard Councilmember Davis asking if resources would be available. We are happy to provide resources from HR or our legal team to make sure, to help, uh, make sure that this is fully consistent with, with the ordinance. But the, uh, you know, this is not something that, this is a, a council board, appointed board, and, and a clerk, uh, administered office. And so we do not want to insert ourselves where, where we are not welcome. So however we can be helpful, we will, we will continue to, to do that i- in the best way possible. So happy to offer suggestions for, you know, how to move forward tonight or, or any other suggestions moving forward. Uh, it, it really is what, uh, what does, what do, do council members and what does the, the clerk's office, how do they want to proceed?
Okay.
I would like to, um, Clerk Jones, we're still in the portion, council members are asking questions. And then we'll come back. We have gone to the public portion yet. I'm sorry Clerk Jones?
Uh, it was just, uh, um, uh, the, my, the clerk's attorney who reviewed the job description as well, Michelle Engel had her hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry. She, is she part of your presentation or under?
Yeah, I asked her, I asked her to be.
Okay, thank you. I did not know that. Well, okay, I'm going to, um, see if there's any council persons that would like to ask questions that we go back and to complete your presentation. I would like to say that I do have some concerns about the consistency with the titles and lining up with the ordinance. I have expressed those concerns. I've actually put them in writing because I think it's important that we have an ordinance that has been plat, passed. And this is too important for our community. Our community has waited years to have a citizen review board. And we want to get it right. And I think by us working together and being, and having a, uh, a level of consensus in regards to the job postings, the first beginning. And we're going to have to work together to ensure that it meets the, um, the, uh, goals that, uh, we have outlined in the ordinance and working very closely with the clerk's office, with the mayor's office. But basically, the council, you know, has really spent, um, tremendous time and efforts and the sponsors and the, the sponsor and the co-sponsors have numerous meetings. And so we want to, when we come out in terms of, um, advancing, uh, the citizen review board, we want to make sure that we have the very best product. And that's where I'm at in regards to my concerns. So Clerk Jones, I'll go back to you uh, so that you do have your attorney, who is part of your presentation. At this time, I'd like to, uh, recognize your attorney. If she could state her name and address, please, for the record.
Uh, Michelle?
Hi, it's Michelle Engel. I am representing Clerk Jones. Thank you, uh, President White, for recognizing me um, and listening to the presentation. And I did have a chance to review the job description today. Um, I just want to say, if it's, you know, various titles and revisions that need to be made, that's not a problem. But in reviewing other job descriptions, um, throughout the country, one in Charlottesville, Virginia, and Dallas, these job descriptions aren't mirrors of the ordinance. Anyone applying to this job who successfully gets the job would eventually have to follow the ordinance, um, by the letter. A job description is, and this job description in particular, um, does capture the essence of this ordinance and comport with South Bend's ordinance. And I'm comfortable with the language. If the council though needs some revisions, I think that's doable. But moving forward with it as is today is also doable, in, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate those.
Okay.
If there's no, Clerk Jones?
I was going to also say, I have Roger Pinto, my deputy clerk, who also wants to speak to the timeline of the job description?
Yes. Please do so.
Roger?
Thank you very much, Clerk Jones and President White. Um, what Mayor Mueller said was, uh, entirely accurate from the point of view that the job description that was received by the clerk's office is the one that was attached as an appendix to this resolution. Is received by the clerk, the clerk's office from, um, the city, uh, Human Resources Department on October 26th. It was created by providing the ordinance that was passed on October 5th, as well as supporting it there from NACO and the Department of Justice and biographies from directors of review offices around the country. And we received two products from Human Resources. One was a job description with subpoena authority and one was a job description without subpoena authority. The clerk's office moved forward with job description with subpoena authority because the ordinance includes subpoena authority. There have been no changes or amendments to the ordinance. That being said, the job description has remained unchanged until yesterday. And that occurred because the job description has been circulated amongst, uh, the common council and the clerk's office staff, uh, with the clerk's office waiting for and, uh, attempting to facilitate some conversations around the understanding of that review office director position, uh, hoping for some suggestions. We began to receive some suggestions. Uh, I know you provided some, President White, yesterday. And then we received, uh, the, uh, the mayor's office suggestions earlier this afternoon. That being said, there are a lot of issues or, or questions in regards to what the actual review office director does. And we've had some of these conversations between the clerk's office and the administration. In terms of better clarifying and understanding what this position is. Uh, and when we're having conversations around, you know, the language is inconsistent with the ordinance or there may be some issues, I think that's because some of these things haven't been clarified yet. And we're moving forward with the job description. Um, so if we look at the resolution itself, the language on the resolution, uh, is coming verbatim from the ordinance as well as the 21 CP resolution. That's the, the physical resolution that's proposed with this as an appendix to it. The job description had remained unchanged until yesterday. And we begin to update that in terms of titles. So if there's further clarification with regards to how it complies or, or doesn't comply with the ordinance, those are discussions that we're going to have to get more specific in terms of the language and which specific language is of issue past the, the, the titles. Because, you know, we, we had an email exchange earlier tonight where we, we discussed the actual, uh, director of the review office title and how it should be on the job description. So there, there are some little things like that. But I'm wondering if there's not a deeper, um, issue within the job description itself for people's understanding of what the, the review office, review office director should be, considering we've gone through the process with HR already?
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else that's part of your presentation before you go to the public portion?
No, um, that, that is it for me. I am in, uh, agreement with, uh, my attorney, Ms.
Thank you Clerk Jones. I'll now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of, of substitute resolution 21-01? Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting? I do not see any hands up.
I do not. I do not see anyone, um, in the public wishing to speak in support of the resolution?
Thank you. Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition of substitute resolution 21-01?
I do not see anyone in the public, uh, waiting to speak in opposition of resolution 21-01.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. Clerk Jones, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Okay. Um, I don't think I need to take five minutes. As stated by both my attorney and both, and, and, uh, my deputy, uh, Mr. Pinto, I am in agreement that this job description has gone through a process of, uh, being reviewed by administration, by council, has been sent to, uh, by legal council, has been sent to council members. And when we first began this, this journey, uh, I was advised by council members to contact the mayor's office in regard to the job description. And so that is what I did. And, and that is the job description that we came up with. And, um, we attempted to get as close and in, in coordination with the mayor's office, with the human resource, we attempted to get as close to it as we can so that the, the person in the position can be successful and fulfill what it is that the council designed the ordinance to be. And, um, I tried to be very transparent in regard to giving, uh, making sure you all get the information and making sure you all had the, the job description. I passed this job description. I circulated it, as Roger said, multiple times. And so I would like to just move forward, um, with, with the job description. As stated, I mean, it's going to be, when the person, when the, the, when the actual director gets in, the actual director will fulfill the ordinance as stated. And they will move forward with doing what needs to be done. And so I'm comfortable, but it changes the, the changes that need to be made, I can make them. I'm comfortable with moving forward with this job description so that we can get this thing going. Because I'm asked, you know, about the timeline, which I didn't even get to review at this time, which we changed. But to speed it up, I can't speed it up by myself. So I'm just, uh, asking the council to move forward with, with passing the job description, understanding that the executive director is the person that really is going to make the job.
Thank you Clerk Jones. Well, the public hearing portion is now closed with your rebuttal. I'm going to go to council members. This is your opportunity to make any statements at this time. Councilmember Henry Davis?
Yeah, uh, thank you. And so, look, I just had like two years' worth of MBA classes. We did a ton of, uh, discussions about human resources duties. Michelle Engel was spot on on what she said. I, I agree wholeheartedly. Uh, the thing that I'm wanting to say that kind of contradicts with that first initial statement is going to be that we've worked really hard together, meaning we, uh, the council along with, uh, members of the administration and along with the mayor to get this thing passed. Uh, if they are uncomfortable with what is on paper right now, I get it. If they are uncomfortable with what is on paper right now, I get it. Let's just get the paperwork and the language done the way that they feel like that it should be done on the same front, on the same front. You, you're going to still have a director that's going to implement and the director is still going to make sure that ordinance is being applied. So if it's two weeks just to get the mayor's office and his team on board and said that they're happy with it, let's just go ahead and do it. I just can't keep going, going with this hamster wheel. We have to get moving. We have to get this done. So that's what they're asked before, let's just go for it. And, and next meeting, I am sure we'll pass through and we can get busy.
Thank you, Councilmember Henry Davis, for those comments. I go to Councilwoman, I want to see, Rachel Thomas Morgan?
Thank you, President White. I just want to make a couple points of clarification. So in, as I look back at my, the timeline that I...
She's frozen. Councilmember Morgan, I think. I'm going to circle back to Councilwoman. Okay, good, because you had frozen for a period of time.
Yeah, something just happened there. Sorry. Am I on, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I, I'm, the point I'm making is, is a clarification on the timeline. So I had seen two versions of the job description as Mr. Pinto described, with and without subpoena power. And then the mayor had, I saw, I was, we were copied into emails from the mayor's office that they hadn't received a copy. So a copy, I assume, was forwarded to them, although we were not copied on that. Last Tuesday, we received a copy of the position description from Clerk Jones as an FYI. There wasn't, um, there wasn't a request for feedback on that. Maybe I should have assumed that. I apologize. Mr. Pinto then on Thursday, January 11th, forwarded the resolution and the job description last Thursday. And so the materials that would be supporting the resolution. So I'm sorry, but I object to that this has, this has gone through a process of, of feedback and iteration. In my opinion, I have not, that's not the process that I have experienced and I have no intention in holding this up whatsoever. I just want this job description clear and consistent with the ordinance is all I'm asking.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas Morgan. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
The point I'd like to make is we were all on that joint committee meeting. We all knew that this was of urgency. So when those emails were received to review the job description, that was our job. That was what we were supposed to do. And if you saw those emails and chose not to review them and not to state your concerns, then to do it in the 11th hour is just not fair. I agree with Clerk Jones and I don't think the desire for the perfect should be the enemy of progress here, y'all. We've been working on this really hard and the job description is more than adequate. I agree with Attorney Engel. So I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Are there any other council members wishing to make comments? Councilmen Kenneth Lee?
Yes, I would just like to say, um, I, I, I don't want this to be as hard as it is. We're living in a very critical time where we need to get things moving. But I also agree with, with Councilman Davis. If, if, if we need to take some time to get things right so that everybody is, is good, because at the 11th hour, I, I never like to do things at the 11th hour because things get dropped or things are not done right. So we need just a little more time to get this done. Let's get it right so that we can get on with this. And I, I think the clerk's office has been doing a, a, a very good job of trying to keep us in the loop of what's going on. And I just know that this is a very critical issue. It's important to the community. And I, I, I think that, I think the description is pretty, pretty good, but if, if we need to get, to make everybody be okay with it, let's figure out what we need to do so that we can move this ball forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
I totally agree that I think we're very close and that we need to get it right. And I am willing to work with the clerk's office to make sure that we get everything that was outlined, whether by administration or by the council, to make sure that it's consistent throughout. I mean, I know it's a difference between a job description and a resolution and ordinance, but you have too many parties that's involved as well, the council being one of them. So I think that we just got to make sure we're, we're right there. It's been a lot of work, great work done by the clerk's office. And I think that we are really, really close, that we can continue to move forward while we're finalizing and making sure that the changes are upgraded. So I think that we're right there, but we need to take, whether it's the next council meeting, to get everything cross-referenced and, and correct.
Thank you.
I want, I want to commend the clerk's office for their hard work that they have been doing.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Are there any other councilmen or councilwomen would like to make any comments? Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski?
Yes, I would just like to echo Councilman Davis. You know, if we have to take a little more time to, to look at getting everything right and Councilwoman McBride, I think that this is so important that let's just take the time, come back in a couple of weeks, hopefully, and, and be able to pass this. And I do commend the work of everybody. The committee that launched this and got this going has hours and hours of work. All the council members have been engaged. So at this point, being so close, I would just feel better if we made sure that all of the language was 100% and then we can move on. But I would like to, to just let everybody know their hard work is noted and let's just move on and, and get it right.
Thank you, Councilwoman Niskoski. Are there any other council members who would like to make any comments at, at this time prior to, for me asking for a motion of action? I too agree with Councilmember Henry Davis. He was the sponsor of this ordinance and the bill and Councilwoman Lori Hammond and all the work and time that was put in, but also the work and the efforts of the clerk's office. We are very appreciative. And as Councilman Davis has said, that two weeks will be time well spent. And when it comes before, if that's the desires of the council, then I, I know that we will be at a different level and that they will have clarity, as been asked, that everyone will have a clear understanding as well. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion from the council, from a motion regarding substit-, I mean, I'm sorry, substitute resolution 21-01.
President, I, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to the clerk's office and to the Committee for Revisions and brought back to council on January 25th.
25th. There is a motion that has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan? Councilmember Hammond?
Nay.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
I noticed that Councilmember Henry Davis, you have your hand up. The motion has passed. Councilman Davis?
Yeah, I just want to say, everybody, I, I'm not interested coming back here two weeks from now and then we're going to pick it apart again. I hope that we have, I hope that we have enough within ourselves to take care of this next meeting. I really do. I'm trying to get off the hamster wheel.
Okay. I agree with you, Councilmember Davis, and we probably need to have a timeframe in which the, the draft would come back. And also, Clerk Jones, would you like to have some input from council members in regards to as you begin to look at the current job description? I know some have submitted suggestions and some from the mayor, too. So if you could email us, the council, tomorrow to outline the timeframe and also the level of engagement that you would like to have from council members, that would be greatly appreciated. But also that the timeframe would be that we will come back on January the 25th and we will be taking action on this job posting. Again, as you've heard, all the council members have acknowledged all of the hard work that you've done, you and your staff. And as Councilmember Davis has said, we're close, okay? So this is no reflection on anyone within your office. No, we just want to make sure that we're at the point that council members will feel comfortable with the job posting. And the goal is to come out with the best that we can, but also to ensure that there is the level of support that's needed. Because as we all have said, this is too critical for our community. And this is just one little hurdle we have to, you know, jump over.
I agree.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go now, there's no bills for first reading. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
I have unfinished business.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Niskoski?
Yes, thank you. Per the standard operating procedures 06-2016-SBCC, I just want to fully disclose that I have submitted to the clerk's office my uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement and it's supposed to be an acceptance for the next regular meeting under unfinished business. And I have filed it with the clerk's office.
Thank you, Councilwoman Niskoski.
Thank you.
Under, is there, under new business, Clerk Jones will make a, some comments?
Yes, actually, the comments in regard to the standing committees, the, the boards and commissions is, we're in the process now of, we're in the process now of getting all that stuff together and technology. And I don't have my actual statement that I have, but we will issue a press release once it is complete.
Thank you, Clerk Jones.
Okay, the information that's regarding the state council, standing committees, boards and commissions, appointees, and application procedures will be forthcoming from our office in a press conference.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Well, now, is there any other new business? Seeing, well, now...
Miss White?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't...
I'm sorry, I had my hand up. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and administration for the Hope for the Holidays project that we had. There are a lot of calls and emails that we're getting from the community thanking us for the hats, gloves, and scarves, and socks, and hand sanitizers, and masks, and the hams and turkey giveaways, and the Toys for Tots. It was a major undertaking around the holidays, but we did an amazing job. And everyone wanted to say thank you for us coming together and helping out in the community. So I wanted to share that information.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Are there any other items under new business? I want to make sure that I do not overlook anyone. If not, we move to privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak under privilege of the floor?
I don't see anyone waiting from the public to speak in, in privilege, on the privilege of the floor at this time.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no one wanting to speak on the privilege of the floor, again, want to thank each and every one of the council members and the clerk, as well as the city and our citizens. And we want to welcome you to a new year and that we know that we have much work before us, but by working together, we'll be able to move forward. So I'm really appreciative of each and every one of you. And since there is no one waiting to speak under privilege of the floor, this meeting stands adjourned. Good night, stay healthy, and stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.
President White?
Good night. Thank you, President White.
Good night.